I don't see any lights outside. I'm gonna call to order the October 28th, 2025 Canterbury Planning Board meeting. The first item on the agenda is approval of the October 14th, 2025 draft meeting minutes. Do we have any significant suggestions?
There aren't any suggestions.
Alright, if that's the case, if anyone has any other suggestions, say we do that now.
I will move the minutes.
A second.
Alright, any comment on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.
We have a full house, right, so five, two minutes approved. Alright, next item on the agenda, 114 West Road continuation. So we have a number of materials that were attached to the October 14th meeting that were submitted before then, there was a continuation request and new set of plans today. So I'll leave it to the applicant, I guess to start us off, tell us what you've submitted and walk us through that. Before I go there, real quick, I just want to add that Matt Monahan had a family emergency, so he cannot make it, and the fire chief can't make it, but town administrator is here and can relay his comments.
Yeah, Eli Lanal from Bernstein Scher, Tim Sheedy, Keith Anzadi, Errol Decker, and Sam Foysey from Meridian Engineering. We, of course, have received the comments, the various third-party reviews, et cetera. We had a, what I thought personally was a very productive call with Ken and Matt. Too bad that Matt's not able to make it tonight, but I think we worked through his comments pretty well as a group. Sam, I think this leads into the revised engineering, lightly revised, and it's probably best if you just go through what we have.
Yeah, so Sam Foysey with Meridian Land Services for the record. We appreciate the board being able to accept a continuation request. The goal of that was to receive those reviews and have some time to provide it. We recognize this plan is just before you compared to the one that was previously submitted. This plan is really, just represents that we can comply with the third-party engineering reviews and that we'd be, while it was submitted to the board today, a copy of this will be provided to K D Partners for their satisfactory review. And we'd be hopeful that we could make that a condition of approval tonight with several other conditions that, with modifications that were outlined in Matt's letter to the board. Substantially, what has changed substantially from the last planning board meeting is unit density or unit counts. And we heard the board loud and clear that there were going to be no density bonuses granted, so we weren't going to be allowed up to the 34 units. So we came back with a plan for the baseline density. Included in that baseline, that change to the baseline density is we did add a second commercial lot in the back to bring the total to three commercial lots. It does incorporate this, it is incorporated within the same area. Really, the goal of that second lot back there is hopefully a billboard if other approvals are sought, we recognize we gotta go through zoning and probably various other approvals. If not, that lot will be available for another commercial use outlined within the zoning warrants in the future. Some changes that occurred between the October submittal and this submittal where the use of this triangle area here was being utilized. The reasoning for that is when we got the request for the temporary turnaround, which I believe was a decent request and outcome from the third-party review, it then made sense to reduce the duplex units from this cul-de-sac area, loop road area here and try and maximize the most amount of single-family housing, which we feel like that's what the board might want. I understand that the board didn't, wasn't that favorable of this triangle piece, but limiting the amount of duplexes allows for a better product and it also allows for a bigger building envelope to give, keep some flexibility and some architectural styles. So before I get to the engineering review portion of it, I want to touch on the phasing. I did add some additional phasing notes. Basically, to summarize those, it broke it up into three phases. To summarize it, phase one, all the phases remain the same, but I wanted to spell it out a little bit more clear. That being phase one is constructions of the roadway, construction of the residential roadway, sorry, the roadway up to the phase break line located here. Construction of the loop road, constructions of the pump house and water supply system, prepping the front commercial lot to the grade of flat, which includes also stubbing water and stormwater facilities to that lot. So essentially, it's a ready-to-go commercial lot. Phase two A or two B could go, one before, in either option, two B could go first, two A could go first. That simply spells out that the front commercial lot has an allowance of 70% impervious coverage.
Excuse me.
Bless you. Meaning that, meaning that someone could build the site there and not have to waste any area for stormwater improvements, because in the master stormwater system, that's already been accounted for. They simply need to construct a septic, construct a parking lot, construct a building, connect to the water supply system, and connect to the stormwater system, and that lot's ready to go.
So just to make sure I'm clear on phase one, so you said it's the loop that the houses eventually will go on, the beginning of the road towards those back commercial units up until the phase line, the well and stormwater that's in that first section?
Yeah, and I guess other associated improvements with the residential.
Okay.
I then add on there that a town of Canterbury site plan permit is expected to be required, where when this lot is developed, we would expect them to be back before you as required by your development regulations. Phase two B is similar to that, with the exception of it would require the construction of the remainder of the access road and would require the construction of this stormwater pond located in the rear, in the south of the property. That pond has been sized to accommodate for 75% impervious coverage of this lot. So essentially, the stormwater design is already, is ready to go. And the intent behind that is once we apply for an AOT permit for the state stormwater requirements, they're already covered underneath it, and it's one less permit that someone needs to go receive for those, for those two commercial areas. And again, on that one, I do state that a site plan permit is expected to be required. With our previous submittal, we did provide a fiscal study. I just want to kind of point out some key points there that I believe that were mentioned in Matt's letter about possibly needing a school analysis, which I think the fiscal study does incorporate that with, it does represent since 2018, there's been a decrease in student population, about 7.3%, which is a total of 50, 51 children with not a relatively even split between elementary school and high school. And then that this, this development is likely to generate about 10 new students in that system. So if you kind of compare it to where it was in 2018 and where it might be once these are developed, I believe it's still under the peak. And then I believe at the end is probably the most important part to the town is that it does generate a net increase of 140,000 a year, once you subtract, once you add up the taxes to the, from the development and then minus the, minus police, fire, EMS, DPW, and then most importantly, the school, the school age children from there. That study does not incorporate, doesn't take any benefit for the commercial parcels, so eventually when those get developed, there would be a greater increase to that. Kind of moving into fire comments, we did receive them today, probably the, I could say the same of me submitting plans today, so I'll refrain from that, because you could throw that right back at me. But I would like to just kind of go through them, just so that way we can kind of have a clear record. So again, hopefully, we can shape a condition of approval similar to engineering approval, if we can, conditioned on receiving satisfactory approval from the fire chief. An important note to get to is, in the beginning of that, in his paragraph at the top, is that one and two family dwellings are exempt from automatic sprinkler requirements. So anything related to sprinkler systems within those structures wouldn't be, wouldn't be required. We recognize that there are probably are sprinklers required for the commercial units, which would be addressed at the time of when those site plans come.
Yeah, I think there's a statute on that. Do you have the site, so we just put it on the record regarding one, two family units?
He references it in here, does he, is it RSA 155A in RSA 153 or meditated?
I think 155A is the adoption of the FIRE code.
So I guess I don't have a statute.
If you don't have it, that's fine, we can.
I trust the fire chief that he's saying it correctly, and we can add it into the record through submittals once we respond to him. Just kind of going item by item. The first one is, the fire apparatus access road shall extend to within 50 feet of at least one exterior door that can be opened from the outside and that provides access to the interior building. And I guess a quick side note, a lot of these are kind of building permit-related as well, but I can demonstrate them on the, on the plans here where these, these driveways are 22 feet long, so any fire truck that's within this roadway is obviously within 50 feet of the front door. I don't believe you can get further than that on these, these sites. Let's see here. Where one and two family dwellings or townhouses is, or townhouse is protected with an approved automatic sprinkler system, I believe this kind of becomes not applicable because of sprinkler systems. It can increase to 150 feet, however, none of that is proposed. The fire apparatus access road shall be provided such that any portion of the facility or any portion of the exterior wall of the first story of the building is located more than 150 feet from the fire apparatus access road. No portions of these buildings are further than 150 feet from the roadway. Do you want me to go through these one by one, or is it?
I think it is helpful to you, to us, as much as you.
Yep. Let's see here. Fire access road shall have an unstructured width of no less, not less than two, or 20 feet. We're proposing a 24-foot roadway. I believe it's 24, but I can double-check on that.
More than 20.
More than 20, more than 20. Where approved by the AHJ, I'm not sure, sure what the acronym stands for.
It's already having.
It's already having.
Thank you. The width of the fire apparatus access road shall be permitted to be less than the minimum specified. Again, we do need the minimum specified. The width of the fire access road shall be increased when the minimum width specified is inadequate to accommodate the fire apparatus. I don't see any reason why this would need to be increased. 22 or 24 is fairly typical for a standard roadway. The turning radius for the fire apparatus shall be approved by the authority having jurisdiction. We can provide a auto-turn exhibit that shows the town's actual fire truck moving around these, these radius, radii, and we could add that to as a condition of approval.
So that's not something that the fire chief saw previously?
He has not seen that previously, but that's something that we could have fairly quickly, and I'm 100% confident that a fire truck can make it around this road system. Let's see here. Turns of fire apparatus access road shall maintain the minimum width. That's being done. Fire apparatus access road connecting to roadways shall be provided with curb cuts extending at least two feet beyond the edge of pavement of the fire access road. I think this is typically if, if there was like a fire access road around a bill, like around a larger building. But if we're treating this as the fire access road, our radiuses are like 25, 25 feet, which is well beyond the two feet that's required. Let's see here. An approved water supply capable of supplying the required fire flow for the fire protection shall be provided at a premise upon which facilities, buildings, or portions of the building hereafter constructed or moved into the jurisdiction, the approved water supply shall be in accordance with Section 18.4. Where no adequate or reliable water distribution system exists, approved reservoirs, pressure tanks, elevated tanks, fire department, tanker shuttles, or other approved systems capable of providing the required fire flow shall be permitted. I think that this is more related to the commercial sites. It's also more appropriate when you're actually on a town water system. However, we do have a proposed 30,000-gallon fire system located between the two access points to the loop road.
Which, I see them sort of visually on that O1, but is, which plan has the note that explains what that is?
I guess I don't know where it's called out there. Should be the actual detail for the fire system as well.
Okay.
I do have a note that says fire lane on it for, so that it's been helping.
D3 is the cistern?
Is it D3?
D3, I mean, there might also be stuff under one.
Sheet number six shows a proposed utilities meant for the cistern two. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm not sure if this one's applicable, given that we're exempt. The minimum fire flow for, fire flow and fire duration requirements for one and two family dwellings, having a fire flow area that does not exceed 5,000 square feet, shall be 1,000 gallons per minute for one hour. I believe all of these structures are less than, probably less than 3,000 proposed, or even less than 2,000. A reduction in required fire flow of 75% shall be permitted where one and two family dwellings, dwelling is provided with an approved, approved automatic sprinkler system. So again, I think it's not applicable, however, we're also below those thresholds. I believe this one's not applicable as we're proposing a fire system and not fire hydrants. Fire hydrants shall be provided in accordance with Section 18.5 for all new buildings or buildings relocated in the jurisdiction unless permitted by 18.5.1.1 or 18.5.1.2. 18.5.1.1, fire hydrant shall not be required where the water distribution system is not capable of providing a fire flow or greater than 500 gallons per minute at a residual pressure of 20 PSI. So I don't believe, while we haven't tested the wells, to provide a pump system that can exceed those thresholds is fairly costly and you would not, it would not be feasible to do. However, we are providing the fire system. Let's see here. Fire hydrant shall not be required where modification or extensions of water distribution systems is deemed to be impractical by the AHJ. There really is no system to extend here. But again, we are providing the system for fire protection. The provisions of 18.5.1.1 and 18.5.1.2 shall not eliminate the fire flow requirements of Section 18.4, 18.5.1.4. The distance specified in Section 18.5 shall be measured or fire apparatus roads in accordance with 18.2.3. Again, I think this is probably related to hydrants, and again, we're not proposing any hydrants. Where fire apparatus access roads are posed with median dividers incapable of being crossed by fire apparatus, or where fire apparatus access roads have traffic counts of more than 3,000 vehicles per day, hydrant shall be placed on both sides of the fire apparatus road in an alternate basis. And the distances specified by Section 18.5 shall be measured independently of the hydrants on the opposite side of the fire apparatus access road. I think it's well obvious that we're, that doesn't apply to us. Fire hydrant shall be located no more than 50 feet from the fire apparatus road, that are proposed. Fire hydrants shall be provided for each, for detached one and two family dwellings in accordance with both the following. One, a maximum distance to a fire hydrant from the closest point of the building shall not exceed 600 feet. If you consider that, if you consider our cistern to be a fire hydrant, it's the furthest building, generally right at the face of the building is 600 feet when measuring a radius around that access or that, such a point. Maximum distance between fire hydrants shall not exceed 800 feet. And again, there's not 800 feet to exceed. That brings us to the end of our fire department review. Any more questions on that piece?
I was thinking, you go through, if you just like at a high level, all the new material, and there's some other things, and then we can circle back and pick up each one by one.
Yep. So the new material is ba, is more due to the engineering review, and I can go through that back here. The project has two phases shown on the plans. Let's see here, I can kind of skip to the end of this part. Also, a large amount of impervious air flows into infiltration basin C, which I believe is this one, the one, furthest to the rear, but not proposed development as depicted on the plans. If the phase two is to be part of the application, full construction details should be required for any proposed infrastructure. We did add in the details for that basin. We also included this in our, this access road in our profile, and that's what kind of triggered the phasing note to spell out why, why there was a large amount of impervious area going into this basin here. We also added another note of land coverage assumptions, just to be clear what we're, what we're proposing.
So just, I guess maybe I'm not following that piece. So proposed, some of the planned phase one is largely the residential loop. You have two A as the front commercial lot.
Yeah.
So where does the section of road between the end of that first phase line and the start of the commercial lots fit into the phasing?
That would be within two B. So to, to be able to construct these lots.
Yep.
Which would require a site plan approval for what's actually going on in these lots. It would then trigger phase two B, which would involve constructions of the remainder of the access road and then constructions of this basin.
Okay, and so that basin C is proposed to be at the time that you're doing the two
The commercial.
Commercial pieces and the extension of the access road.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to kind of build it and then leave it out there, and typically when basins are left out there, they're unmaintained and then they grow up to be a forest. And then, is a turnaround required on the proposed road extensions to the south part of the site? This was the phase two where we put a temporary turnaround, is that way any of, sorry about Where we put the temporary turnaround here. Once phase two gets completed with a site plan, there will be, I think the turnaround is implied that you'll be able to maneuver through that site and then exit back out of it.
So turnaround in this context is back in, back out?
Yes, kind of like a hammerhead turnaround.
Yep.
Let's see here. Clarifying the whists of the roadway, where our typical detail did not match with the roadway width. That's a oversight on my part where I didn't catch that, that error, but that's why we have third-party engineering review, so it makes for a better plan. We fixed that typical section to identify 24 feet wide. And then, it appears driveway lengths between the proposed roadway and the buildings are as small as 20 feet. It actually was 22 feet, which is two feet larger than a, than a large parking space. A typical one is nine by 18. Large parking spaces are 20 by 10. This, this is 22 by, I think it's 20 wide, so that way you have a pretty substantial driveway to, to put two vehicles in there. Not, not including the, I believe you're constructing garages as well, so there will also be garages.
I am, when I saw that in the engineering review, that the parking, the drivers were too small, I didn't necessarily agree with that, and I wondered whether, your thoughts on, on that commentary, whether it's necessary to get bigger, because then obviously, you know, there's more impervious, you know, more asphalt.
Yes, more goss, it's more stormwater, it's more disturbance area. And I think that we sized it appropriately, being 22 feet additionally having garage space, so even if they do use the garage for storage purposes, you still have two spaces available outside. I think what he was considering is, a lot of times, people don't pull directly up to their garage door, and then as your bumper kind of hanging out in the travelway. So it was, I think it was a thoughtful comment, and it just appeared like it was smaller than it actually was, but. And then, assume that the fire system will be reviewed by, by the fire department, based on his comment, I'm not sure if it was fully reviewed, but we'll make sure that we receive that approval. He caught a mislabeling of one of our catch basins. We fixed that catch basin on sheet, it was actually on the profile where it was mislabeled on sheet 13 to 24. A typical detail for access road to the water system pump station is required. We've included that detail on sheet D-1. Details for the.
Hold on, one second, just make sure I'm following along. D1, alright. Sorry, I hold you up.
Yep. Adding details for the outlet control structures that are proposed, those details have been Intertration basin schedule, sheet D-4, includes information for basins not shown on the plan, revise the table as required. That, that schedule has been updated. And then, provide a stormwater operation and maintenance manual. That's, that has been provided, simply as basically saying, make sure you maintain your system. So vacuum out your catch basins, make sure you mow your stormwater facilities appropriately, clean out any clogs and pipes and so on. And I believe that's the end of the third-party engineering review comments.
I saw in reviewing them late this afternoon, there was a section in there pertaining to invasives?
So it's a section, so we are preparing for the operational transformation, and the state makes us invasive, we'll use that for all of our inspection work. I can't, I'm not intelligent enough to know what, which plants are invasive or not, if there are even any out there, but it gives at least a, a starting point of, if you see this, remove this.
Interesting.
So the, I guess the next letter to address which I, I am, again, thankful that the board reached out to these reviewers, because it hopefully gives you confidence that the plan is good enough for a conditional approval. Also, the letter from Matt kind of starts to kind of outline, let the board kind of think about what conditions could be approved in this process. There are some items that I just kind of want to kind of quickly cross off the list here because of, we were further along in the process than I think Matt thought we were, and that's where, thank you guys for letting us have a conversation. And that's where, thank you guys for letting us have a conversation with him. For being there and kind of being the third-party witness to that. I believe that we kind of crossed the threshold of phasing, of what's the board's authority to require phasing and what's not. We do recognize that the, the town does have a building permit phasing ordinance. However, I don't believe that there is anything within the regulations that require phasing of a development like this, other than how we had it proposed. He mentions that a site plan needs to be approved as well as a conditional use permit. I would, I would say he was probably thinking more in the commercial aspect of things. And we do recognize that site plan approvals are required for the commercial. However, at this time, the cluster subdivision is, in my opinion, and I think Eli would share it, is the appropriate application to submit this under, to create this subdivision and create this condominium subdivision. Additionally, we already submitted the conditional use permit concurrent with this application. So they're kind of running in parallel with each other. And then he does give some good recommendations. I would imagine town attorney, he would want the town council to review our condo docs. Obviously, we don't have them drafted yet because we'd like to know that this project is moving forward before Keith goes and spends a lot of money on an expensive attorney to, to draft them. And, and so we would accept recommendations of, or conditions of approval to mirror that of saying, town, town attorneys satisfied to review a condo docs, Eastman documents, open space restrictions, et cetera.
And that is a standard condition where they'd be vetted by town council and reasonable suggestions made.
And then he does mention studies, I'll do quote unquote, missing below on page three. And we'll kind of get to those once we, once we get down there. Comment, how will, the common areas could be maintained by the condo association, including the roadway. It's our intent to have the, this whole site maintained by the condo association. So there's, will be no town maintenance associated with it. Suggests that third-party engineering review suggests the fire chief should review and recommend on fire protection methods. And then he does say, any recommendations should be a condition of approval. And this is where I have a hard time and I know Eli has a hard time. What was the verbiage that you suggested for reasonable?
Again, yeah.
And reasonable, just, just in case that there's something in there that we can't, can't agree with.
And that was something that in discussing it with Matt, and again, wish he was here to back this up. But hi, his comment was that yes, reasonable certainly worth it should be read into the way he proposed that.
A very, very familiar one is the following state permits will be required and should be received as a conditional approval prior to issuance of a building permit. And Keith might not like me saying this, but typically is prior to plans being signed. So I would, I would even go a step further on the severity of that condition of, before the chair here signs these plans that they're, that all these permits are in hand. He then give, and I can list those out, which those are, they are on the cover of the, of the plans. New Hampshire DOT driveway permit, New Hampshire DOT excavation permit, New Hampshire DES alteration of terrain, New Hampshire DES state subdivision approval, New Hampshire DES dredge and fill permit, New Hampshire DES individual sewage disposal system, New Hampshire DES public water supply. And then potential conditions of approval for the CUP, approval of the site, site plan application. I would strike site plan and make this the cluster subdivision application. The CUP notice of decision is recorded at the Merrimack County Registry of Deeds. That seems fairly typical. And then he get, lists out some potential conditions of approval, which I would prefer to, I guess, go to, what I would suggest would be conditions of approval, which would be receipt of all state permits prior to the, prior to the signing of the plans of this permits I just submitted. Another typical one is payment of any outstanding fees related to the application and other recorded documents through the registry of deeds. Documents dealing with the deposition of the open space shall be provided as a condition of approval. Subject to review by town council, recommendations made by town attorney. Any reasonable recommendations made by town attorney should be complied with as a condition of approval. And then I, we kind of added this and you can tell me Eli, if this is legally appropriate with the applicant reserving the right to amend this, this condition if there's anything that we, we can't come to. Verification from the town engineer that the plans and stormwater plans are acceptable. Professional stamps and signatures as well as owner's signature needed for the final plan. Notice of decision of this, of the subdivision is recorded at the Merrimack County Registry of Deeds. And then I guess any other conditions that this board might see, see fit. And we can add the fire truck turning after, auto turn exhibit as well as a similar fire department approval as well.
Mr. Chair, can we comment now or do you want to just?
Sure. I, what my sort of high level thought, but I'm open to suggestions is that we, some of the things that we're gonna need to talk about, but try to group them up, but go through sort of the layout of the new plan. If we have any questions there, then work our way through fiscal impact, the fire chief's comments, stormwater management plan and the engineering.
Wait for him to.
So I think you're.
He has a great point.
You're wrapping up. So if that works for the board, we could start there. I think it makes sense maybe to start high level, what, any questions about the site and the layout of the different uses and phasing questions? And then we'll work through those other review documents that we got. Does that work for everyone else? Alright, so have at it, if you have any questions related to the new proposed layout with, is it 26 residential units, one of which is a duplex, three commercial units. I think fair game is the phasing proposal as well.
I don't know what you mean by phasing. There's two, I, I see two different phasings going on. One is, you know, your one and two A and two B. And then is the other one suggested by the CC, whatever it's called, said, we're near a reasonable.
Yeah, I think if we want to talk phasing now, we can do both of those, that's fine.
Okay, so the, regarding Matt's phasing proposal. Major issues number one, where he suggested requiring phasing in of the commercial units with the residential units as they are built. One commercial unit per every 10 residential could be a framework. I thought that was a really great idea. And I think, I'm not sure I agree with his numbers. I would, I would do it nine, nine and eight rather than 10, 10 and six. But, but if that were your proposal, I, I think I would have to withdraw my objection that, that this violates the ordinance. Because by phasing in the way that the, that the CNA, that Matt suggests would ensure that commercial actually occurs. And, and I would add to his proposal that the commercial either proceed or be simultaneous to the first batch being built, rather than afterwards. Because if it were afterwards, there would be very little incentive to develop the third commercial use. So I, I encourage you to, I know you said you have some doubt on that proposal in your presentation. But I think that, that satisfies me, I don't know the rest of the board, that satisfies me that this, that this proposal complies with the ordinance. Because it would ensure that commercial happens. I know you still don't have a commercial, you know, an entrepreneur at your table. But this would ensure that, that commercial actually happens. And it happens throughout the, throughout the construction of the whole thing. And we get our three commercial units, you know. So I, I really encourage you to do that. Then I would, whatever, whatever my vote is worth, I would withdraw my objection to that, that this is a violation of the ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, if I can weigh in on that.
Sure.
I have questions first about the authority under state law and the regulations. And that I don't see a way that dictates that that phasing protocol can be imposed by the board.
Well, just CUP.
So, yeah, I mean, outside of phasing, if we look at 6.5E, says the conditional use permit shall also require the approval of any accompanying site plan or subdivision applications. And if the accompanying site plan is denied by the board or withdrawn by the applicant, the conditional use permit is deemed null and void. So I think within the existing conditional use permit requirements, it contemplates that we can require you to get an approved site plan application as a condition of the entire conditional use permit.
Sure, but I don't know that that dictates the timing therefore. And it's also, it's an interesting idea that if we add someone, and again, my example is a land use lawyer is always nuclear plant because it's an easy one for example. But if we come in and say that we want three to be there and we'll pretend it fits and it gets shut down for reasons that we don't want a nuclear plant or residential, like next to the highway, all that other stuff. Based on that token, if that gets denied, this could rescind our approval?
Well, I think if, if you ignore phasing and you look at this requirement, I think it would be fair that the board could require all site plans be a condition of, the condition of, like it says, you shall also require the approval of accompanying site plans. And phasing would work to the applicant's benefit in the sense that if you're breaking them up into those phases, you are only actually getting approval of that first site plan for the first commercial unit with the first batch of residences. And so it, it allows you to delay somewhat, but.
What section, sorry for interrupting, what section?
Six, 6.5E.
Thank you.
But again, I do think it creates a feasibility challenge where if you're building residential units, you're going to do certain things for economies of scale in a row, whereas stopping at nine. And if we can get something, if Duncan wants that front pad site and we get that, great. But if they don't, it, it puts the spot of, then you get not only no commercial, but also stopped at nine units, which is a huge detriment to us, but also to the town.
I mean, I think to Josh, your original question, if I'm understanding right, is what is your willingness to sort of engage in this? And you had mentioned needing a site plan that you had put at two A, but it sounded like it was closer to one based on its location for that front lot and a site plan for two B. But even if it wasn't thirds, if it was half the units and site plan for that first commercial unit, which seems like you have at least more solid plans, even if not necessarily definite plans. Is there, you know, willingness to engage in that discussion?
We have the willingness to build the pad site in such a way that it's 70% impervious coverage, that it's basically stubbed in and you're in a build to suit possibility. But again, my learyness and reticence of agreeing to a blanket condition on that phasing is that, again, can provide additional information about the commercial across the street from it. But we've seen that that failed and is on its way back, et cetera. But I can't, I have a hard time dictating what commercial user will say. It is time for us to build on exit 18 in Canterbury. Whereas I do believe that houses right now, in the current market conditions, are obvious.
It sounds like you're describing Josh's concern though, which is that residences get built and there's, there's more difficulty that the commercial doesn't follow, which is kind of what I'm hearing.
But again, I will reiterate that our maximum financial incentive is not to permit pad sites and leave them fallow. We, I don't want to sit here as the developers representative and say, you have to trust the economics and trust us that we want to do this. But us building three new commercial lots and saying, it's not really worth it to us to fill those is irrational.
I don't think it's irrational because when you finish the, the residential units, it might be very rational to walk away. You did your job and great job.
Why would you leave that on the table?
Could I ask a question?
Because.
Well, let's just try not to talk over each other. Errol.
I, I just, I guess I, we're looking at the section you, you've quoted. Where does it say a site plan, commercial site plan shall be provided at this stage?
This is a commercial zone.
Well, we're, we're providing three commercial sites in our subdivision plan.
Like you're not providing three commercial uses.
No, it doesn't, what I'm asking.
Hold on guys, one at a time.
Where does it say that's a required? I'm not seeing it.
It's a CUP and so we can.
Looking at the CUP.
And, and. CUP allows us to consider many things? Conditional uses. And if I understand CUPs, maybe I don't, there's a lot of squishiness there.
True.
And, and you know, as long as you don't butt up against your constitutional rights, we, we can require that it be commercial. And I know there's.
But it is commercial.
It isn't, you're building residential units and that's it. You're not, you're not doing this.
Again, I just asked, where is, where is it articulated in the law?
So I think the answer is 6.5E, where particularly where it gets to that sentence that if the site plans are denied or withdrawn, in other words, if they're not moving forward, the conditional use permit, the entire permit is deemed null and void.
Yeah, I apologize, I, I didn't ask my question. Well, if, what I'm, what I'm asking is where in that paragraph does it say we're required to submit a site plan for a specific commercial unit to be approved at the same time?
So what I'm trying to say, I mean, if the conditional use permit ultimately becomes null and void, if site plans don't get approved, envisioning this rolling out where you build a bunch of structures that really are never gonna, no one's gonna ever have you unbuilt a structure and have all those site plans that ultimately, you know, could be withdrawn or never move forward, that's an issue. But I don't, I don't think we're there yet. And I think some people are sort of jumping to the end of the road. And what I'd like, I think is more productive is to talk about what other options there are to get to a little more certainty that you're gonna move forward in a timely fashion with at least some of the commercial, without holding up your project in such a way that you can't start building what you need to be building on the residential side, which I understand is an easier thing to construct and start selling in. I, I think there's gotta be room for compromise here.
My suggestion was a good sort of halfway.
I appreciate that. And I guess I'm, I wanna sort of continue on a thought process is if, if somebody, we or somebody brings a commercial site plan to the board next month, six months from now, and this approval is in place. If you deny that site plan, it doesn't preclude somebody from proposing something else.
Right.
Right? So, so it's not a once and done. And that, that I think is where I'm confused.
I understand, but if, if you push everything so far, that's where there's a greater risk. And that's where you see the concern here is some more assurance that something's gonna move forward, so.
And, and I, again, I, I get that, right? But all of this is ultimately market driven. We can't create a market. So, so partly what you're saying is you, you would prefer a project to be stalled when the market is demanding or desire, desiring a, a particular product. We can't say when somebody is going to.
I think right now, we only just started this conversation. I don't think we are saying we want your project to stall.
No, I don't.
So I would much rather that instead of talking about sort of worst case, where is there room to talk through?
Is that the feeling of the entire board? I'm sorry, but can I point out one thing about this, by May? And that the nine, one, nine, one, whatever you're thinking about coming up with. A lender isn't going to put up the financing to build infrastructure for all of these units, knowing that it might be nine houses getting built. And then it could be a year before something goes in the back. The financing doesn't work that way in these projects, so. That's all I'm saying, I just want that to be considered because I want you to understand how that works.
As I understood it, Josh was sort of asking a question and I see there's, there's a lot of reasons. I'm hearing a lot of reasons from you that you don't like 991. What I was trying to get us to a more productive place is can't we just have a discussion? Are there alternatives or other ways to approach this? I mean, there's a million ways to do this and it sounds like you have more concrete plans, literally and figuratively. I mean, there's a million ways to do this and it sounds like you have more concrete plans, literally and figuratively, for that front pad. Sorry. And so, you know, is there a way to tie that part of it a little bit earlier with some of this so that, you know, the town sees at least that part and that maybe it's harder? And I, from our prior meetings, it sounds like it's harder to find a buyer and a proposal for a site plan for the back lots, but it seems like you more or less have an idea about what that front, it might be that the tenant is gonna change, but you have designed and showed us plans for how, you know, parking and traffic is gonna sit.
I have plenty of options, what I could fit on that site. And the specific design to, of the stormwater system, like taking that off the lot makes it way more efficient than if you need that stormwater on there. It makes it very efficient. So you don't have to drill a well on there. So it's like, it's, it's getting it primed and ready to go. Or there are no definitives. I did the layout because it's a flat site and I can reasonably testify that those uses can, can fit on that lot, those lots. I guess my question to the board is, I know that was your statement and it seems to be backed up by the chair. Is that the feelings of the entire board on that?
Yeah, I don't think I'm in favor of nine, nine, eight or anything like that. But I do think it's important for us to have this discussion and I don't want it to be limited to that one.
And I don't even, like, let's not get into the numbers. Is that, is that the feelings of the board of, the board has the authority to deny the CUP because a site plan has not been submitted? Because that's essentially what's, that's, that's kind of the, I don't want to call it the threat, but that's essentially what is.
I think if, where I was going with that is only, I think if we have the authority for that sort of more extreme, which I don't think is particularly reasonable, there's sort of implicit authority to do less than that, which is where I think there's, there's room for us to talk this through and consider some other options. It's meant to be, you know.
I want assurance in however you want to provide it, that there's going to be commercial use and leaving it to, you know, some amorphous, you know, market. You know, I understand the financing. I understand the problem of the timing of the, of the, of the site plan. You know, if you put up a $20 million bond or whatever, you know, the numbers, right? But, but, you know, some, what's the assurance that, that there is commercial use in this commercial zone? And I just thought this was a creative idea, but I'll take anything. I can honestly respect that. Like, I get that. But, and this might be where you're kicking up the argument here. I'm bound by the regulations and I try to stay, and I try to stay in them and read them. I read that section more as, so you have a CUP permit. It grants it because you meet the standards. And a CUP permit can't live on its own. The CUP needs a site plan or a subdivision. And the regulation is kind of specific in or, it's not and. And we are providing the subdivision to go along with it. So the subdivision application is what keeps the CUP alive. The approval of the CUP is based on the standards above. In the opinion of the board, all of the standards described in this article have been met. The board shall issue the CUP permit. The CUP permit shall also require the approval of any accompanying site plan or subdivision application. And that is saying, in the event that you would deny the subdivision application, then the CUP permit would be void. So I don't read it as the board has the authority to require, to require a site plan to go along with the phasing part of it. Yeah, I, me, you're, you're, you know, we've talked about this, you know, months ago. This, this is a residential use shoehorned into a commercial place and, you know.
Not by our own making.
Pardon? Not by our own making.
Yeah, it's not shoehorned, it's following the ordinance as written, but.
Fine, but it's commercial.
Let Josh finish.
And, and, you know, I see a lot of residential there, you know, I've heard people have talked about many times, but no assurance of commercial. And, you know, I know that poses financing problems. I understand it poses the threat, but this is a CUP which gives us some, some, you know, squishiness, but it's a commercial zone. And I don't know how to get around that without some assurance that commercial actually occurs. So creating commercial.
Again, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off certainly. There's multiple challenges of this. Obviously, the town has decided that the version of the ordinance that we're operating under and we're vested under through the preliminary is not the town's preference. And I think probably several factors of that have been solved here. But in terms of, I don't want to pick the scab of ruse and shoehorn and these things, but we've designed to the ordinance as written here. And I, again, understand your concerns about it, but it's, it's what the law that we are operating under is.
Understood. I, what I'd like to focus our discussion right now is we, we are looking at the new layout. So we've got 26 residential units. We've got three commercial units. We have your proposal for, current proposal for, we'll call it two phasing, but maybe it's three if it's two A and two B or theoretically different. Moving away from phasing briefly, and I think we'll have to circle back. You have now a third commercial lot that we haven't discussed. And I know that you said earlier billboard or potential other use. I don't believe billboard is an allowed use under the ordinance, so we'd have to, I think at the very least, know that there's something, you know, is that site big enough to accompany a commercial use? And decide it without it being the type of use that would require variance.
So without doing, I did add to a concept on, since those lots have been, I would say divided. However, it does meet the minimum acreage of, I think it was a 1.5. I sized it to be the minimum acreage of the zoning district, kind of purposely for that, for that question of, is it a viable lot for commercial? And if your zoning ordinance is saying that this is the minimum size, I'd sort of, you're saying.
Yeah, of the, I mean, because you went through a number of different potential commercial uses that could fit what is, what was the combined lot. Are any of the types of uses that you talked about with us, I guess, two months ago now, are they affected by that now larger parcel but splitting, like losing it? And are any of them something that could fit in, can I call them B and C?
It obviously shrinks up what I showed you before. Can the hotel fit on there? Probably, maybe. But like if I go to.
I think while he's grabbing the plans to show that, part of the reason to do that is to add flexibility to this where you see various commercial properties being sold, either take A, A and B, or the whole, you know, an opportunity to have a bigger than a smaller thing so that we have some flexibility. Because the point of this and going back to the way we are trying to make this reasonable for us as developers, but also for the opportunity for someone to come in with a commercial use is that we want this thing to be stubbed out and built and designed in such a way that someone says, oh, shoot, exit 18, that's the right spot for our use, then it's ready to go. So that, and the way Sam rightly phased these things in terms of all of estate permits come at the beginning phase, it is to try to mitigate those concerns. And again, we spent a lot of time this afternoon and previously in our groups discussing how we meet what you've spoken up of the whole time. Because again, it's not that you're, you're wrong or that it's an insane question. It's that we want to figure out how we can do it so that it actually works with a goal of.
All I was trying to get at is we talked about some commercial uses and now you're splitting it. And I want to know, does that, does that limit some of the ones you previously talked about? And what potentially fits on the third one?
And again, we're trying to add flexibility such that we can get the commercial that this town wants and this site.
If there's two of them there, and your, and your condo agreement allows them to be combined. And so right now it's like two small businesses, but let's say one thing you want it to be there. As long as your condo documents are up.
And again, from a market standpoint.
Can I give you an example of that? They'll be not exactly the same, but if you look at tiers and conference, the lower level of that building and the first floor are two, actually two separate condos. So it's a four unit condominium building, but that's an example of where they have, they own, just own two of the units.
So I do want to get there, but it can, is it fair to say then that you would be open to like a condition of adding into your condo documents that those, like a user could buy and use both of them collectively for a single?
Certainly.
Yeah, and I would also say when it comes to like tax base, it's really about the size of the overall building on the sum of the building. So if one user comes in and says, no, I want both lots, they could then, they could then go and essentially merge the lots together. And I'm not sure if that needs to come back before the board for a subdivision approval. That minimum is the site plan, right? But kind of getting back to like what can fit out there, that lot in the back is bigger than the front one. And this is what, this is what I can reasonably fit in the, in the front area. And I did reserve some stormwater just in case that it needed the sheet this way. But right now it doesn't need that stormwater too. So it shows that it can even comply with, even if it had that fit stormwater.
Yeah, my only question first, can you just orient us some?
This is west, this is.
Oh, this is the front one, sorry.
This is the front one, but you can kind of.
I see, okay.
You can kind of visually tell that the sizes are.
I just thought we were looking, we're here, I'm real confused.
You said the back, like the very back one?
No, this is the front.
You're talking about the one.
This is the one on West Street.
The one back. This is, this is the front one on West, on West Street. And I'm just using that as an example of this lot is generally the same size as this one. So I'm showing that this constant office, the back one's bigger than the front one.
All right, hold on guys, where's all that piece? Megan?
You had just mentioned that you have discussions, you're designing with the intent of attracting commercial that this town wants. Yeah?
Commercial, the board obviously has a desire to put commercial in the commercial zone. That's even without our discussions, that's what the zoning ordinance indicates, but yes?
Yes. So I'm just, can you reflect back to me your understanding based on everything you've heard in all of these meetings and town input? What does this town want?
Commercial in the commercial zone.
What kind of commercial?
Nothing but business.
Yeah, I don't think I can.
It's a mixed ordinance.
Something that's ordinance compliant in terms.
I'm, I'm just going on the statement you just said, which was that you were designing with the intent of commercial that this town wants. So I didn't know if you meant specifically you're designing to attract a specific type of commercial?
I'm saying.
Or just generally commercial?
Generally, commercial is expected. And this is a mixed use under this particular ordinance where we can have some residential, which was the master plan's goal, as well as adding commercial spaces. Our point is that we will stub out commercial, build-to-sue lots. And if it ends up being use A or use B, friendly from an economic standpoint, if one of them will buy the space and it's a legal permissible use, we have no preference as to it. I don't know that any landlord designs thinking I want A versus B if the economics make sense.
Can I ask a question? Because you have the duplex and the single lot. So maybe this is a two-part question. Was there the plan, because I got confused when I get late plans. There was nothing proposed to be there in the eight fourteen plan or the prior one? Did I see that? And then, so what, what changed between those two? If we're looking at, because there was a plan that would have had 26 residential. Where were they located just relative to this change?
I think we, we didn't like that that little triangle was being included in the open space.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, the, because I didn't have time to lay these out and compare them the way I would have liked to.
So there were, I believe there was three or four duplexes that were located, I believe, on these four lots.
This is the, so the earlier, this past month, that other plan had more duplexes.
Yes, and the intent was to make this all single family. And I wish I could have fit all of them in there, but I can't fit them in there.
That's fine, that's, that's very helpful.
In the single family fashion.
And then my second is, are there, where on the, well, like what's the approximate size that your, like size and architectural style that you're looking at for the single family homes under this current proposal?
So we left a building envelope for those. Was it forty? Which is 42 by 50. Essentially, we're not building a box, so don't worry, don't worry about that. But wherever, that's the building envelope of where the structure can fit within. And then when it comes to architectural style, I don't believe that, that there is requirements to comply with architectural style. I know we had many discussions about it, but at this point it seemed like it wasn't going anywhere. We couldn't really meet somewhere, so the plan that was presented before is probably the style that's going to be constructed.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, when we talked last, I don't know, I'm pointing at your PowerPoint that is not currently on. It was more single family homes and duplex. And why I say, sorry, I say single, I meant a single floor, like smaller sort of total areas, kind of the impression I got from the earlier plan.
There are definitely stories.
I think we can inquire 6.5C, six talks about proposed architecture. So if, if you have sort of, what has changed is, I guess where I'm looking at, like what would we envision? Or what would you be willing to agree to in terms of what those single family homes would look like or approximate size? And I don't, this is, you know, I want to see how it fits out. I don't have a particular preference in terms of small, big or anything like that.
Yeah, so I guess what the previously submitted is what's looking to be.
Are there different architectural styles that you have in mind if you're contemplating now potentially building larger homes?
I don't know if anything, anything larger is proposed. It would be more of the single family proposed. How many single family and how many duplex?
If I could.
All single family and one duplex.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that'd be great.
With a little more detail. Is, we would expect to build traditional New England style homes, caves, colonials, ranch. If, if it fits, yeah, within the footprint, which I think that they would. You know, I think the sizes are likely to be in and under the 2,000 square foot range, which I think we've talked about before at some point. It would, it would be what you would, you would expect to see from a traditional New England village.
And.
Farmhouse.
Is the current plan or is it depicted on one of the sheets? Because you had mentioned garages. Is the intent that every single one of the residences would have a garage?
I think it's expected in New England, if you can fit it, which these lots would fit, garages. Might be one car, potentially two. And I would expect the garage doors to not be just plain, but have some architectural character that you might see on the bar.
Any, before we leave that piece, anyone else on the board want to talk proposed architecture or the sizing as it relates to vehicle access, circulation, parking? I guess it gets to those garages.
Circulation and parking I'd like to talk about. Since Amazon and Grubhub and FedEx and UPS, and then Thanksgiving and a lot of guests and somebody fixing some refrigerators and some dishwashers and garbage disposals, I don't see where those vehicles are going to park without blocking access to emergency equipment.
They're gonna park on the grass.
Well.
Where do they park now?
We're in the street. It's a, you said 24.
Same thing that goes on.
We have big rights of way with large shoulders in most places. Well, most places out here have driveways where they actually drive into. But this is not, I think, I think it's a logistical safety concern.
So for these, to that point, what's, sorry, it's a lot of, a lot of plan pages. What's the, I'll call them lot for lack of a better word, but approximate size of each of the lots for the single family? And I know there's some variation.
I could do some quick math here just to.
One of your plans.
I'm sure it's on one of the plans tomorrow. How much am I flipping?
And there's snow bags. You can't pull off the road. Okay, I'm on the engineering side of things where the survey does the last.
Thank you.
I would say about ten thousand square feet here that a lot of these lots are a hundred by, a hundred and two by ninety-two, a hundred and two by.
Just shy of a quarter acre? Megan, anything on traffic, circulation, parking?
I certainly share the concern about where people are going to put their guests. I'm less concerned about deliveries and more concerned about like the, the inevitable situation where somebody's going to have more than their twenty-foot driveway where if a car is visiting, like, I mean, they have to park on the street, there's nowhere else for them to go. And what does that do to your available space for people to drive? Especially on something like a holiday where everyone on the street is pretty likely to have people who want to park on the street. I would also love to come back to our questions about sidewalks, because I think we've talked about that a lot and not actually gotten a answer that was particularly satisfactory on it.
Yeah, so if you want to answer that, if our sidewalk's completely off the table, but, and also just to clarify it, if I'm, I'm just going to assume that if the driveways are twenty-two feet, that means that they're going to have about twenty-two feet of front yard for the remainder of their lot?
Yes.
Okay, so are sidewalks completely off the table at this point, or at least based on this proposal?
So that actually increases the safety concern because anyone who's walking in the area is now walking in the street.
Oh, no.
Too many paths.
One other thing about the safety concerns, there will be again condominium documents repaired. So granted, we understand that there are holidays, there are things, someone might be having a birthday party or whatever, that we see parking on the side of the road for a brief amount of time. But we can certainly have rules drafted to be vetted by town council about general parking requirements. And I think it's worth considering that it's fairly unlikely that every single one of these people would host Thanksgiving if none of them would travel. The reality of the situation is that these things have a way of working themselves out. But again, the rules could be set in such a way that don't park on the street as your general way of.
Isn't this the kind of thing that among the, in, in meeting during the condominium annual meeting or whatever, if there's a problem, the, the residents.
Absolutely.
You don't want to be too specific in the condo documents.
No, but we can set it up, you know.
But then if you specify no parking on the street, then ultimately when somebody does park on the street and someone has a problem with it, it's now a law enforcement problem?
No, if it's condominium.
Civil, but, but it again, there's, there's some sort of judicial discretion here, prosecutorial discretion that the board can see that if it's the sweet sixteen party, we're going to let it go for two hours and then not worry about the park.
I think, I'm sorry, Mr. Gordon's point. If, if generally condominium associations, my experience has been, you have annual meetings, there are rules and regulations that I, in this case, I wouldn't necessarily bake into condo docs restrictions. But it would become a, 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 a rule that the homeowners could address over time when they see issues arise, rather than tying their hands.
So if the homeowners decide they need additional parking, overflow parking, where do they put it?
I've seen it handled a number of different ways. If they wanted to add paved parking, they'd certainly have to come back to you all for, for that. Another way I've seen it handled is a rule that parks only allowed in their specific driveway or in other neighbors' driveways. So it's sort of there's a negotiation between neighbors and friends. And you suggest off-site.
Or enemies.
Off, 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 oh, yeah, that happens. Off, off-site parking where if I'm going to have a party and I know I'm going to have fifty people, it's up to me to go up to the local hotel or somebody where I can provide parking and shuttle people. Again, something that's worked out between the.
Sometimes you see no overnight parking on the street.
But there's also some common areas here that, you know, like the grassy, I suppose. Like the, it's, it's not on your plan, but it's on, whatever, there's a bunch of common areas here that.
Yeah.
There, there, and there.
I think we might be a little bit in the weeds in terms of the parking, especially in light of the fact that the state has parking requirements now that have been reduced, but also that it's a twenty-four foot travel way. It's not like we're trying to propose an eight-foot travel way with, that if one car parks on it, an ambulance can't get through.
So I guess I didn't clarify with garage, but tentatively the plan is put two-car garage in each of the residences, right? And you have.
One or two.
One or two?
So that's three parking spaces generally per minimum.
Hold on, and each of the driveways, I think Sam said, would be twenty-foot wide by at least twenty-two foot deep. Are there any driveways that would be proposed that would be smaller than twenty by twenty-two?
I think you need that to get in.
How many cars could reasonably fit on twenty-foot wide, twenty-two foot deep? Can you fit four cars? I'm not clearly a car person.
You can fit two, probably on the paved area and then one in the garage.
The guy's got a boat and a RV isn't going to.
I'm saying like sometimes you go to a party, like people, people hack in. I'm saying is, is twenty-two foot deep enough that if someone wanted to, that they could park four cars?
One at a time.
So that could cost.
Maybe if they're small.
Using the garage and then I guess if it becomes a more severe problem where you see people end up doing like a little paved section around the side of their house just to make some additional parking spaces.
Would it be feasible if, as part of addressing this issue, that you would agree to put a two-car garage on each of the houses? Or is that going to, I know some of these are a little bit different, is that going to impact?
It would impact square footage and layouts, so yeah, no, we wouldn't want to do that.
We wouldn't want to hit up ourselves with, additionally, a lot of, there are roadway requirements where they let you go down to eighteen feet. So we are.
And I get that there's room on the side and there's a lot of ways. I'm trying to sort of chalk through like total amount. So do you know like approximately how many of these houses you're proposing to have one garage? Or envision having one garage versus two?
I don't know the percentage.
It is, you know, helpful where there is at least some concern, right? If we know it's going to be half, are going to have two-car garage or three-quarters, that, that's just more total parking for the site, which sort of from our end limits the situations where you're going to have people parking on the street or needing other spots.
We are also trying to be mindful of architectural diversity of the different houses too, which is why some, some ones is another option to make sure that this doesn't look like something that the board is not.
Would you object to putting in a small overflow parking area for eight, ten cars?
I mean, it's, the, the point of this is to keep the cost down, right? I mean, we've already, we started out at thirty-four units. We totally were exemplary, so then we shrunk it down to twenty-nine with twenty-six residential units. So just, the little extras pick away and eventually, and fortunately the picking of the way raises the cost of the, the overall unit. So we would be reserved and wanted to add cost to the project.
So I can know?
It's generally a no, yeah. I guess I could have got there shorter.
It's time to talk about infiltration pond.
All right. Ooh, are there anything else from the board in terms of overall layout? And maybe we can move into stormwater. We've got the stormwater management plan, the maintenance manual as well and all those that we can go through. But are there any related to the layout of the residences? Where are some of these, the other location, character, natural features of the partial, parcel landscaping, topography, natural drainage? We'll hit drainage in a second. Vehicular access, circulation, parking, pedestrian circulation, signs and lighting, and proposed architecture?
Well, I think we've previously had some really valid concerns about these two units hanging out across the street here. And now they're back to that position, but.
Yeah, I disagree in some, but, you know.
I mean, I continue to have concerns about pedestrian safety in this. Like, and I, I don't feel like those are being addressed particularly at all, but I'm not sure we're going to get answers on that at this point.
All right, stormwater?
Stormwater.
Let's do it. Throw it at the mic.
So we've gotten approval from the conservation commission, or like no objection from the conservation commission. But the board has never, this board has never approved using stormwater in the undisturbed area. And I think our constituents deserve to know how the board feels and is going to vote on that.
All right, so I guess as a starting point, can you direct us to the open space calculation, Sam?
I don't quite understand the problem before we go to the solution.
I, I'd like to look at the, the calculation anyway, but yeah, we can certainly.
The board needs to approve the like use of the stormwater mitigation areas as part of the undisturbed area. It's not automatic.
So forget his exhibit, I haven't updated since the last revision, but, but the stormwater or the open space area remains the same. So it accomplishes the same goal. That's, this is just an exhibit, I believe it was submitted with the prior schedule.
Just one new book.
It's like the layout.
The layout's there, we weren't counting that area anyways, so.
And are you, is this exactly fifty percent? Is there some leeway?
It's an acre over the fifty percent.
An acre over.
Okay.
The access road is not included in the calculation, the access road to the well, sorry.
Yes.
So the only activities that are being considered in open space area, if we're looking at six point four, or was it? Five, is stormwater management. And so it's the.
Well, and the pump house.
I think the pump, they excluded it from the fifty percent. It's just that it's, it sort of interrupts the contiguity. So is that right? So the only activities, right, that are included in that fifty percent plus one acre?
You could say the actual well itself, but, because the well is proposed to be like, like.
Oh, I see.
The dot that the.
The well will be a little bit off of where the pump house is.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. Greg, sort of floors, areas viewed?
All right, well, so the question is basically, are we allowing them to include the wetland mitigation easement areas? They're called drainage easement areas, you have them labeled now? Are we allowing that to be included in the undisturbed open area acreage calculation?
And if I, if I could interject, I guess before, we, we did have some discussion about this probably a couple of months ago when we kind of had our first original one before we went to the conservation commission. That's where like originally we were counting this little triangle area, originally we were counting here. And from hearing what the board felt, that's kind of where we fell on this. And we did discuss those stormwater ponds and the rationale behind it was, they kind of are a pat, I refer to them as a passive use. Just kind of sitting there, when you look out, you, it's just an indentation in the ground with a berm on the other side. Yes, there will be a little ripper spillway for when it goes over or when stormwater stages up, it will go over. But generally speaking, it serves the purpose of what open space is, is just, it doesn't impede the purpose of the open space, I guess I would say.
And.
Right, well, my feeling is it's something the board has to approve.
I would agree.
Something we can grant. And when we have asked for sidewalks and we get no, we've asked for extra parking, we get no. And we asked for sprinklers, we get no. And we asked for a playground, we get no. I don't see why, my inclination is not to think that.
Yeah, anyone wants to, anyone from the board want to comment on that piece? After that, I'd like to just, we can circle back to what the conservation commission said. So you guys are there, I only read the minutes, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is they, and it's consulting with them. So again, it is, to Greg's point, it is our job to approve it. But the conservation did not have a concern with the three, the two drainage areas and the stormwater basin being in. What they wanted to make sure was excluded was the roadway that accesses the well pump house. Is that yours? In the pump house itself, that's your recollection of?
Yeah.
Okay.
It seemed very favorable.
Is the road to the pump house going to be fenced or can you walk across it?
You can walk across it. Speaking of fence, I think the conservation commission did have a request of us to put some type of fence to delineate where the backyards end and where the open space begins. And that's where we are proposing a split rail to be broken up, because we don't want to impede foot traffic from going in there. But you also don't want them to mow it or mow like they're mowing their own lawn or do any kind of, you can pretty much put a fire pit out there, like who knows what, that way they know where the backyard is.
Sorry.
Split rail?
That a grain of bonds.
Maybe trickle through. Seems like four or five separate twelve-foot fences or something like that.
Yeah.
Is, this is a surprise from this point, but any opposition or willingness to include as part of the condo requirements that the field portion be annually mowed or something to that effect? Not necessarily increasing the field space, but ensuring that it doesn't grow back up and they maintain the open field as opposed to for us?
I don't think we would have a problem with that. I think the field is what gives it this visual appeal. And I think it was actually one of the density bonuses that we were seeking was keeping that field afield.
I would say mow twice a year.
Yeah.
Mow.
Do they mow it or hay it?
Hay it, totally.
That was a yes.
Yes.
Or if the cows can breed.
Definitely yes.
That's what they're doing in a bunch of places.
I guess.
Those goats.
Immediately.
Is that something else we've done in the past?
Goats.
The split rail thing.
Goat stone off crust.
We could put little, you know, signs on it, like a reminder, a placard that says, you know, open space, please be respectful or something.
Definitely.
Yeah, I, we have not discussed at this point, but my understanding of the open space is it's, it's not, it doesn't have to be open for the town. It can be that the condo unit owners have it as long as they're required to maintain it, and that's sort of the condition. Was anyone envisioning, asking for public access to any portion of this? That's not something I contemplated.
Well, I hope it's not posted, you know, so if someone walks across it, they're not trespassing, but.
I, I guess the condos, whoever ends up becoming the residents there, I would personally leave that up to them, but they'll.
Right, okay.
Well, there's no parking anyways, so how's anybody going to get down there?
Oh, you park at the commercial lot.
No country music festival in the center.
No, I'll buy the commercial lot and I'll have access parking, I'll have the chauffeur's valet parking on the access road.
Would you like to sit on the side of the table as a proposed entrepreneur?
I saw your proposal in the condominium event park.
The docs, yeah, the document that gives the commercial uses.
That they can't be impinged.
Yeah, and that was, like you said, we're, and we don't want the, the residential owners to gang up on the commercial.
All right.
I don't think that is solved by the commercial, by the condo document frankly, because if you get fifty people living here and votes in this town, where we have votes that are, you know, three hundred people or six hundred people, it's, they could, regardless of the condo document shut down, commercial action back there that they didn't like.
I apologize, I missed the beginning part of your.
I said, if you get fifty people in here who vote in town, it doesn't matter what the, what the condo document says. They have the power of the vote and they can oppose anything that they want to back.
So we, we can, this is part of, I think, why ultimately there will need to be review of the condo docs. But there's a number of different ways you can set them up where it is not a purely democratic. But there's a number of different ways you can set them up where it is not a purely democratic, like, unit, and I don't know.
A town votes in town affecting town government as well.
Passing ordinance that.
Oh.
Who knows what, you know, restricts somehow.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
Voting for planning board members, voting for selectmen.
That's, that's hypothetical, I think, a little, a little far for me, but yes, I guess the ordinance could be changed at some point. We, can we, do, is there anyone else who want to address stormwater more? And we had both the maintenance manual, which I envision we can sort of include as sort of a condition for when they set up the condo, that they're maintaining those, but other than that, do you want to move on to fire? We've got the fire chief's comments, and Ken's here, I probably should have done these sooner, so he could have gone home. All right. Ken, do you, earlier, Sam went through, and it's very helpful, the list of those requirements. Was there more or helpful background?
I think, the only thing from the fire chief, that his, his general overall comment was, his concern, I guess his concern is, it's a small town with a volunteer fire department, and he certainly would like to see sprinklers. I know that's not a requirement, it's not a law that you have to require, he would like to see it. But I think the other thing is that he said that as far as the commercial is concerned, he, the, the size of the cistern is a concern of his, because not knowing what's gonna be in there for commercial may impact the need for either larger cistern or additional cisterns. So that was his, one of his big concerns was, was the lack of ideas on commercial and how it would impact the fire suppression.
So Ken, if I can just ask to clarify, was his concern, was that about that, we'll call it, commercial lot A, the one that's right on West Road? And not knowing there, because presumably that's the one, because in site plan review, there could be a different cistern required for a commercial use in the sack.
And that, that was what, he was concerned with that, that really the front lot.
Well, the front lot should be, would be serviced by the cistern written here, and then the back lots.
And again, the size of that cistern, and, and I'm not a fire protection engineer, so I don't know what's required, and neither is he, for the suppression of fires in the residential structures. And now you throw in a unknown commercial, and like, obviously, you guys aren't gonna, the town doesn't want a hazardous waste or whatever, some kind, something that's gonna require a large amount of water.
A paint store.
Can I, yeah, can I, Sam, with the, with the commercial one, and you had pulled up the map, it looked to me, or my recollection is, that didn't, I know that was a potential proposal, that didn't use 100% of the area there. And presumably, there is additional area on what I'm gonna call commercial lot A, where if the use came before us in site plan review, we could require, we could say the cistern that's in place for those residential units isn't sufficient for this proposed commercial use. Does that track on your end?
Yes, you could say, you could determine that it isn't, isn't large enough. What I could do is I could enlarge that fire cistern easement, and these, these systems are made to where you can take the end, basically the end cap of the takeoff, and slap and put other, enlarge it. So I could make the easement large enough, so that way maybe there's a 60,000 gallon, which is like double the size of what.
Well, I meant more that if, if commercial one, how do I put this? My understanding from the chief's comments is some commercial units, it might be fine, and the 30,000 is fine. And so we don't necessarily need to require a bigger one now. Is commercial one big enough that if someone were to come with a particular use that maybe has that greater need, that an additional cistern could be cited on commercial one? Does that make sense?
I guess they could put it underneath, underneath the lot, like underneath parking there, and it could be large enough. However, yes, the better spot.
All underground storage, thanks.
The better spot for it is to just, not today, but leave room in the future that the existing 30, or the proposed 30,000 gallon one could be extended to.
So the existing easement, if you wanted to.
Six, like double the size of it, and then that lot's just restricted by the size of the fire cistern. And I, while I'm not a fire engineer myself, I don't believe it's considering, is the residential on fire and the commercial on fire? Is, is building one on fire, or is building two on fire?
Also.
The other thing, sorry. Then the other thing to keep in mind is, is many commercial uses are gonna require a fire sprinkler system anyways.
Right.
And, and that would, in this circumstance, come with water storage tanks in the building.
I think that was part of his concern, was if, if the commercial does require a sprinkler, where's the water gonna come from?
It would be, yeah, be on site, so you'd have like a storage potential, and it would be sized according to the size of the building.
Again, this is general overall perception of the project. He wanted to voice those concerns.
It was at the full list, we made it through? All right, thanks, Ken.
I get the same question for the back.
You're not gonna make him read the whole thing?
He hasn't seen the new, the new plan, but, but that was my discussion with him, and, on the overall project was.
Did he have anything specific? I know maybe the driveway moved a little bit, but it sounded like no issue with navigating a 24-foot wide road with those, with that turning radius, and.
Yeah, I think that, you know, Sam is proposing to put some kind of presentation together to show that.
Yes.
He's, he's gonna make it around there.
List of things, yes.
I guess, Sam, just, in, in an event like this, we're part of a mutual aid compact, and if, if there was a fire in there, Canterbury does not have a ladder truck, so ladder truck or the tower ladder, something will be coming from over town. So I think the chief would probably want it to say, that's, this is the size of what is available in the mutual aid compact, so you could figure that in there too. That would be the, I think that would be the biggest vehicle that they would.
Yeah, we have, we have actually a tower truck in our database where I'm confident that's what we've been running around. Where I have ran it around a 75-foot diameter cul-de-sac that had an internal radius of 30, 30 feet. And it could, I watched the fire chief of my town whip it around through there, so I can commit to I know it's gonna fit.
So I think a provision for expanding the, the ones just turned is a good idea. And I have the same question, so the back lots, is there space back there, so, you know, for the sprinkler, for the commercial use, whatever it is?
Yeah, I think that was our expectation on the back, that obviously it's beyond that 600 feet, that's the limited distance. So it's gonna need to have its own pieces for that as part of a site plan review.
Anything more from the board on fire, and then we can move to the fiscal impact analysis? Fire? Logan, is everything on fire? Craig, all right. Fiscal impact.
Just one more question real quick.
Yeah.
Fire alarm systems for your buildings, just local library, you're not saying any. I think fire alarm system, notification system for the, that if there was a.
On the commercial.
Activation, no, in the residential, if there's an activation in the residential, that it would go to a general.
No.
Okay, all right.
Change of question.
Yeah.
Will we be returning to the phasing issue?
I think that's probably where we're gonna end. But I want to make sure some of this, it's easier to move through, and we can knock those off and come back. Sam, I know you hit fiscal impact at sort of a high level, can you, if you don't mind, just sort of back through, and maybe it would be helpful to the board to hear just a little bit of methodology and how they, even at a high level, calculate net tax benefit to the town and some of those other pieces that you talked about.
Yeah, so Mark Fugier, Fugier Planning, he's a pretty well-known land planner in town. He probably harassed a lot of your town officials on trying to get data out of them, so calling the school districts, calling the fire department, calling the police departments, and then uses that data and bases on other towns that are similar to, or that they have more data that they can kind of interpolate between areas. One note is this, this fiscal study is prior to the change to get more single family. However, that would probably increase the amount of tax revenue, and I'm not sure if that would decrease the student, the likelihood of students.
Right, because this was based on 20 single and six duplex, and now it'd be 25 single.
So I'd imagine it's probably about the, a net the same, but just to kind of go through it. He's expecting that the project for just the residential would, where is it? To generate 308,000 in tax revenue, that the police would be a negative of 10,000, buyer would be a negative of 8,000, solid waste would be a negative of 4,000, other general funds would be a negative of 3,000. And then school is always the largest cost, which would be a negative of 143,000, bringing the total negatives of 168,000. But with a net positive to the fiscal impact of 140,000. To, schools are always a big issue, and on his page nine, he identifies that since 2018, the Shaker Regional School District enrollment has decreased 7.8%, with the largest decrease seen at the elementary school of negative 27 students, followed by the high school of negative 24 students. And then he predicts that this development will increase students of about 10. So we're still below the 2018 threshold, and then there is a net fiscal impact, or net positive fiscal impact.
And what, sorry, I'm missing it. How does, how does he estimate 10?
I could, the basis is generally based on bedrooms, expected bedrooms, and correlating that with historical data on the three-bedroom home, or generally generate X number of children. Even though I, I didn't prepare this, I'm familiar with how he usually does those.
Thank you. Anyone on the board have questions about the fiscal impact analysis?
Question about that school calculation, so that's just generally about bedrooms and homes, not specifically starter homes, if these are proposed to be.
I, I can't speak to it because I didn't prepare the report. I'm making the assumption that he used sort of normal appraiser methods. So I don't know offhand, you know, if, if a three-bedroom home is gonna generate X children, I don't, I don't know that. You have to read the report, but I suspect that that's how he looked at it, and, you know, again, bedroom count is gonna be the big driver, of how many people are occupying the house.
And this development, the people downsizing as well.
So there's two floors, correct? You're not building any ranches?
It could be ranches.
Could be ranches, yeah. It's gonna vary based on market demand.
I mean, it's not, it's obviously not appropriate science, but he's using the best, the best data that he can gather in his many years of experience, assuming it's from a reputable source.
Actually, yeah, I'm more likely to forget my question, I think, than you, because you're paid to remember it. To your question, no, no, where you're getting at, and maybe this is why I was, I was running up on the architectural. Is, is the plan to sort of have a catalog of, these are your options, and then when you sell a lot, it's built to spec for the owner? And that's part of why you can't say one or two, because it's, they have some flexibility when they purchase it?
Absolutely, yeah.
Understood, all right, I was, I was missing that piece.
Which again, I think adds to the character of anima, right? It's less likely that you're gonna have four houses identical alongside one.
Right, okay.
So we try to drive that.
That helps with some of my other questions, yeah.
Building bots instead of like actual jigs.
My question.
Hey, he remembered.
I grabbed the Department of Education, New Hampshire Department of Education Statistics for the school district, and I just, for example, in the Canterbury Elementary School, the peak year of student enrollment was 1997, which was 284 students. And then as of 2024, it was 101 students. So given that there's some plus or minus on that 10-student calculation, there is room in the, in the district. And I think it's a little bit helpful to have those numbers back further than 2018, although that obviously adds the more modern trend.
It might be helpful for you to know that that involved portable classrooms.
Okay.
I was in that school in 1997. I remember it well.
Again, it looks like right around year 2000, it dropped back down, so I don't know what your classmates, why it was so popular, but.
So I think in that consideration, it's also be a delicate thing to approach, but considering just the general generational arc here of folks in this community, being in this community, raising kids, their kids grow up, those folks will not always be here owning those homes, and those homes will be going up for sale, presumably. So I think that's just a testament to the fact that families stay here and raise kids here. But there will be a shift in that. I don't think that that's saying that we have necessarily a decline in schools, or sorry, in children. We have a new generation rising up, and those will rise again, and it's going to go like this, if that makes sense. Does that make sense?
Yeah, again, I'm not a democrat, or, I don't know, but I know that there's been a, there's been a reduction since, I think Logan and I are around the same age, and it sounds like there is smaller number of students now than that.
Yes, because it's following the generational arc of families that have been here, and that will be changing. That's the nature of life, that will be changing, and we have new generations of young families that are now moving to this town, me included, and those kids will be entering school soon, so.
Yes, my only other comment, I don't think it, it overall changes the fiscal impact, but, for those of you who don't deal a lot, but the base adequacy aid from the state is a circular tax, where they pretend it's state money, but they collect it from us. So don't love to refer to that as money from the state, until they come up with a new funding sources and just local property taxes.
Which is not gonna happen anytime soon.
Don't hold your breath.
Which we don't have to solve today. All right, I think that was, nope, the last thing on my list, I'll get back to the front, is, which will ultimately get us back to phasing, is any other part of Matt's review that board members want to discuss? There were a number of different things, and there was also the letter you sent that sort of goes mostly point by point, and I think, if anyone needs to see this, I've got this copy too.
There's a couple of copies in the air.
Oh, it's like multiple copies? Well, I should have passed those out.
There's not, there's not enough to pass that.
I, I looked at the digital version earlier.
Oh, that'll be enough for all three of you. Scott, did you need, I've reviewed it on my phone, well, okay. Okay, I'll just. Yes, yeah, we had it in our email, I just.
Which is the engineering one, yeah.
And then it's, you can't see the color really here, but this is Marty's response to.
Yeah, it was in, it was in my towel, so you could read.
Yep.
Okay, I thought we were talking about Matt's comments.
Well, I meant, this is sort of their response to some of the comments, so I consider them sort of one in the same, so.
It's just the engineering review.
Right, I, Matt, engineering.
Oh, you could mine, because I designed that logo 10 years ago. Meridian Land Services.
So anything else on Matt or engineering review that we want to discuss? Outside of phasing, just for a minute.
We don't have a copy of those, Matt's comments here, right? So I just wanted to refresh myself. Yeah, I, I think, okay.
Before we circle back to phasing, is there any problem, any opposition in the board if we opened a public comment in case there's anything? So we don't lose track of them before we just hit our wall?
No objection, it seems appropriate.
Or you all fine with checking for public comment at this point? Are you all fine with checking for public comment at this point? Alright, so if, if anyone else who's here would like to speak, raise your hand, stand up.
Can I ask a question of a member of the public?
Are you calling out a select board member?
I am.
I mean, I'll ask it, I'll straight up, I, I, I just want to know, you guys keep bringing up phasing and I was kind of waiting till the conversation changed, but we have a building permit cap, so how would the building permit cap allotment affect your phasing and, and building? Obviously, I know you want to get the residential in there and there's the percentages and what you're allowed to take. Would that cap have any influence on how you approach the staging, if that makes sense, your phasing?
I'm more familiar with that ordinance. I don't think it's a planning board matter generally.
Well, it's, if we're approving phasing or plan ultimately, it behooves us to know how it's going to ultimately work with the town's ordinances. We're not approving, right, a building permit or anything like that, but I think it's a fair question.
Yeah, we're, again, we're bound by the ordinance and it does also have certain. Yeah, it has some asides, assuming certain building permits haven't been granted for, it's not a density bonus, but bonus building permits, and so we'll, we'll navigate that ordinance when the time is.
I think, I could, if, so if you have a building permit limitation, we would be affected by it. So, so that in effect could, could slow construction, which is, which is, I think, somewhat what we're talking about in terms of the phasing, or general phasing is, from, from a town's perspective, is used to slow construction.
My recollection is Logan did the calculation and we sort of talked about this and decided it probably wouldn't impinge, even if you built them all at once, didn't we?
Can I just circle back on this?
Yeah, I just want to, before we like do a fold, you can, you can have another comment and then any other public comment and then we'll close the public comment period and then we can, we can have a discussion. So anything further?
In terms of building permit, and I could be wrong because I read this a little bit ago, there was something about the allotment that only one developer could pull so many permits, yada, yada, yada. And you guys said, I don't know, like an hour and a half ago, obviously the economy of scale and the phasing, how that would interrupt what you were trying to achieve. So I was just curious as to if there is a building permit restriction on you guys for a twelve-month period or whatever, how would that affect your economy of scale and your phasing process?
Alright, so we'll hold that thought and anyone else in the public have any, okay, good.
I have one question relevant to the public.
Yeah.
I know we've talked demographics and numbers and how it impacts schools. I'm just curious, selectmen, what would, what would ten new students in Canterbury Elementary look like on the ground, not in numbers? What would that look like?
Well, right now, I think the school, without knowing, I don't have this month's updated enrollment, the elementary school with no fifth grade is sitting at about a hundred and seventeen or eighteen kids. We've seen, I think, eleven students enroll since August. So the school is growing. We are becoming an attractive community, which you guys are trying to obviously garner too. But ten new kids would put us just below, puts in the fifteen-student range of the cost of the school, which have we discussed in that half the school board as to what they're, what they could do with the building. And there are options, but it would, it would have, I wouldn't say substantial impact, but if, if the town continues to turn over, it would play into, you know, school impact, but not to a level that is going to, I don't know, hamper the town financially, I don't think, based on their numbers in their report.
So right now, that wouldn't cause the need for what Logan went through?
The portable classrooms involve the fifth and sixth grade both getting out Canterbury.
Alright, and then briefly before we go back to the applicant, my, my recollection is the only place we have talked about building permit cap is when Beth flagged it in public comment, where are we at, like two, two months ago at this point, but.
Yeah, somehow I don't remember that part, but.
I don't recall any, any analysis of how it would play out, but.
It came up very, very briefly, like almost like a thirty-second conversation, but whatever it is, it is.
Right, so any, anything you want to add to Calvin and Megan's comments?
Again, I think Mr. Fugere's report is, he's the expert on this kind of thing and I think the report speaks for itself.
Alright. One second. So we, I think this is where we should really get back to phasing. I feel like most of what we have talked about, the few outstanding pieces is the board on approval of the three stormwater, I'll call them structures for lack of a better word, within the open space. And then the phasing as that relates to overall the process of getting accompanying site plan or subdivision approval. I have a long list of conditions that we have briefly talked about that we can circle back to at the end. But on the phasing piece.
Do you mind if we move essentially backwards? Because I know we talked about everything, but can we kind of cross them off the list of we're in agreement on or?
I feel like they, they kind of fold in, so. We've, you know, hit parts of access and circulation and landscaping, but ultimately this sort of goes to all of that application as a whole and how it presents. So I'd rather just sort of keep them in, but I don't, I don't see a big discussion on those pieces. But, so we flagged it, or I say, Josh flagged it earlier. There was, I'll, I'll phrase it as opposition to a nine-nine-eight or what Matt had suggested, which was, was it ten-ten-six? And you highlighted there are, that it is, if I'm saying it right, difficulty with citing and getting approval and finding a buyer for a commercial lot, which is where you need some amount of flexibility. In the hour, I know we were talking about other things, have, are there any ideas that you have thought of or ways that you might approach how this rolls out? Where you can get us closer or some assurance that you're moving forward on marketing and selling and getting someone to come in for a site planner view on at least the first, as I understand that to be easier and you're looking to do some amount of site work there initially and to a lesser extent the backlogs.
So I think, I think with this proposal, getting rid of that state AOT permit for someone that wants to come in, it's, they have review periods of up to like ninety to a hundred, a hundred and twenty days. They're probably sitting at about seventy-five right now. So knowing that they don't need to go through the AOT process is a big step. The front pad, knowing that you don't have to go through AOT, you have water already there and you, and you have a level pad ready to go with stormwater being hooked back to is attractive to people once it's, once it's in place. And then, just not to back up too far, but originally we were asking for bonus densities and the conversation was we weren't exemplary because we didn't have any proposed. And so we're kind of getting back into the conversation of would you approve bonus densities if we had those kind of phasing discussions?
So I don't think we're at, and what this conversation has been is like guaranteeing applicant, but what I'm saying is, because we, we still don't know what use will be on there. But are, are there creative ways that you can, you know?
I knew I would tell you right now.
Yeah, so I'm looking for brainstorm at this point, but I feel like there's, there's probably got to be a way to get somewhere close, particularly on the front lot, and I don't know exactly what it would look like, Errol. Yeah.
And I, I do sort of appreciate and respect where you're coming from. I, I, I really appreciate the, the, I'll call it brainstorm and, and the effort that you put into framing something. If you're asking for guarantees, we can't guarantee anything in relation to that other, other than, and I'm going to say this from my perspective, we're capitalists, right? We are, we are actually entrepreneurs. Sitting on property for an extended period of time, like if you approve this, once you approve it, the tax on those lots is going to immediately start increasing, right? So, so we don't want to be spending money year after year after year on something that we're not getting any value from. So, so we're highly motivated to find buyers or somebody who would build out those lots. So, so, so we've got a built-in motivation, but we can't, we can't confidently say to you today that we would guarantee after nine houses are built that we'd have a buyer for unit one or unit ones to build it. So, so if that's, and I, and I, like I have been thinking, what other ideas can we come up with? And I, I can't come up with it, so I just want to be honest.
So I guess, and that's, that's, how do I put this?
And you.
Yeah, sorry, I mean, if the plan is to put a pad on that first lot and that's your first step for marketing it, is there a willingness, for example, to make the, putting that pad on so that that, that you're starting that process of marketing that lot part of phase one with the residential development where you're not holding all of the commercial, you see what I'm saying, like?
Well, what, what do you mean by pad?
Well.
Like, so, so.
I don't know what I mean by pad. I'm using the word I took from, from, from C E O.
Here's, here's a creative twist, right? Somebody talked about overflow park, we'll, 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 we'll level the lot, we'll gravel a parking area there and start marketing right away.
Yeah.
Yes, that could be step one to phase, to phase one. Additionally, I could, we could probably print out the concept exhibits and you could kind of plant them out front as a.
Build a suit sign.
Here's what, here's where you go there.
And by the way, I think another sort of overlap here. It is, one of the things we could make into the condo docs is that, you know, one or at all of the commercial sites would allow, let's say, overflow parking from our residential area.
Well, yes, I, I like more the idea of that if you're going to sort of get that lot ready to start marketing sooner, that helps, you know, I think us see that process as starting and it may not be.
The West Road lot.
The West Road lot, which, you know, it's not.
It's two ways, so it's like the next phase anyways.
Well, it's actually, so it's actually part of phase one of leveling that pad off and prepping that pad out and ready for something to come in.
Phase one today is part of the issue and we want at least some of this starting. So I apologize, there was a hand in the back and I don't know if this is helpful or harmful to you at this point? And then Megan had a question, yeah.
Well, I think to answer your question, like when it comes to marketing, like you aren't asking for uncertainties, what I'm understanding from the way that you're presenting everything to everyone. But yes, when it comes to marketing, we are going to actively market the lot. Within the past week alone, I've reached out to five different, you know, commercial vendors, one being a gas station, one being all of these grocery store, one being Dunkin' Donuts. So when it comes to trying to get assurances, yes, we are proactively trying to find commercial buyers for this property. It's not just going to be, obviously it's going to be listed on LoopNet or whatever you use to find commercial real estate, but on top of that, we are actively searching out buyers. And on top of that, for the back commercial pad, we have reached out to another couple of commercial developers. And even though that's part of phase two, we're already actively trying to list that property and present it to different developers to get something on these pads, which ties back in to what everybody said, that it's good for the tax base and that it's going to benefit the community and everybody does what they want in the end and we're not just trying to leave it blank. There is stuff that's being actively done behind the scenes that nobody's mentioned so far.
Thank you. Oh, hold on, Megan has been waiting patiently.
I appreciate your recognition that you're capitalists and to that end, you don't seem to have much concern with what goes in there, as long as something goes in there. And I'm hoping that you can help resolve the dissonance for me because there is such a concern with the level of detail and specificity on, and care given to, oh, do these houses fit what you guys want? Do these houses fit your community? But when it comes to commercial, it's dismissed as, we're going to go with what the ordinance, we're going to just, the ordinance says this and this is a commercial zone.
So I, I apologize if that's the impression I've given you, not my intent, but I, I have faith in you all. Any, any commercial proposal has to have a site plan reviewed by you. It's not up for us to decide. We certainly would try to persuade people to do certain things and, and part of the marketing effort is to attract people who have a better understanding of, of the market and what's there. But ultimately, you all get to see that and decide. I don't think you want us driving that, that, that's your role.
Coupled with the end user.
The site plan, you know, I, I don't mean to suggest that it's merely ministerial, but you know, as long as your lighting is good and your, and your parking is good and, you know, you got the runoff just handled, you know, the likelihood of, of, of not approving, you know, in the bell curve of reasonable commercial uses, you know, it's, we don't have much, we can't really not approve stuff as long as, you know, the basics.
It's in the table. Essentially, essentially you're saying it meets the regulation, it meets the regulations. And I think what you guys are getting at is more use, like what is an appropriate use that meets the needs of the, of the community? And I would say that typically market ends up dictating what meets the needs of the community, where a commercial user sees a need in the community and then constructs it. And like Dunkin' Donuts is the, a great example of sees the need that a lot of people travel past a site in the morning and so they put a coffee shop right there. And we would expect that a future commercial user sees the need in the community and puts that on either the site in the front or the site in the back. And I, and I recognize that's not the answer that, you know, what you're working on.
I think the biggest use is the visibility from ninety-three, that's going to be the driving factor. The marketability from, the cars going by ninety-three is what's going to draw people in.
I agree, everyone needs Dunkin', but I don't think Canterbury needs another storage unit facility or a billboard, which are the ideas that I've heard so far and that's all.
Scott, I keep, my vision ends right after Megan, you know?
Well, I'm, I'm listening.
Okay.
I guess one comment for me in general is just, I have not had time to thoroughly review documents immediately. Lots of, lots of documents, lots of changes.
I think for me, this whole thing goes to what Joshua has pointed out several times. Are we effectively rezoning this? And this goes back to my analogy of, you know, it feels like we're putting in a, a master bedroom with a bathroom and you're, you're putting the toilet in the master bedroom and then trying to cram everything into the bathroom space and saying, this is levelable and we're sitting here talking about, well, is the window in the right place? And what color are we painting the walls? And no one's paying attention to the fact that we are, this is out of place.
Call it a toilet.
I would again reiterate that the town has moved past the version of the ordinance, but we are vested under this. So your concerns are obviously heard by the community, but the reality of the ordinance that we have designed this under and are not asking for any density bonuses or anything anymore is that this complies with the ordinance.
It's still a C U P.
I hope, hold on. Square it. Nine oh six, we have at least at a, at some level, and just to remind everyone where we've got in terms of what we're looking at. There's the overall goal section, which are a little less specific, but that the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance are upheld, the proposed development will be consistent with the goals, policies and recommendations of the plan for tomorrow, that the proposed development will not have adverse impacts upon the character of Canterbury and that the proposed development complies with the land use regulations. And then as we walk through the general requirements, make sure I'm not missing some of these that we had previously talked about. We have their density calculation. We have I, which we probably should hit again, which is the open space.
And that's been, that doesn't exist, right? I is, isn't I the one that was added afterwards?
I thought it was I five, not I itself.
Is there a challenge?
Six point four I, and so the last piece of I was improvements. And so the last piece of I was, um, improvements, the stormwater within the open space calculation and their open space was, they said fifty percent plus approximately an acre. And then, under the CUP requirements, location, when reviewing an application for a cluster development, the board shall take into consideration location, character, natural features, landscaping, topography, and natural drainage, vehicular access, circulation, parking, pedestrian circulation, signs and lighting, and proposed architecture. So, we've, we've talked about most of these. Is there, Scott, um, mentioned, which I think is a valuable point, that there is a lot of information and, um, including information that came at one thirty today. One of the things on my list that was in terms of things we haven't looked at is the, I'm gonna call it an exhibit, but of a fire truck navigating the loop. Um, you mentioned a number of potential conditions related to how the condo will maintain itself and potentially relating to, right, maybe requiring at least one car garage for each of the residential uses, mowing, hang, additional sister, and those kind of things. Is there other information that the board wants or needs?
Brennan?
Yeah.
Most of the things we've approved lately require a visual barrier. And we were the mixed wood visual barrier.
All right, so that is a good point, and I had it on one of my many pages before I lose it. I believe when we did the site walk, we talked that where that existing road is, there is a portion of, I'm gonna call it mostly red pine for lack of a better phrase, there's a portion between the ninety-three easement and the road, and there is a portion of trees that's on the other side of the road.
Correct.
Right? There's a little bit on, on both. Is the plan to try to maintain that forested buffer on both sides of that road, you know, except to the extent necessary?
Correct. Um, there, there's some minor tree removal for side slopes of the roadway, but, uh, other than that, the majority of both of those buffers described, um, is maintained.
Is there any additional buffer that's planned related to the, the residences, related to the three? This is not the, the right one, but the, the three residences that are in the triangle. And that's fine, you can describe it on the West Road side.
Other than, there's obviously incentive to do minimal clearing that's required to, um, to shut the houses.
I forget, but for the, for the triangle, is that, is part of what I'm calling the triangle, it's that area, is part of that field currently? Or is that largely forested right now? Like, are you clearing and grubbing for those house lots or?
Yeah, so.
Oh, I see, okay.
That's, that's open, so there will be some clearing. Um, but you can't put in any structures.
But that means that there is, the parts that aren't cleared are currently forested.
Yes.
Right? Other information that the board ultimately wants to see before we're voting on CUP? Okay. I personally would like time to review the fiscal impact plan and the two reviews, all in the context of the new revised plans that we got today. And would request certainly the exhibit that Sam proposed in terms of the fire truck. The remainder of my list was mostly on conditions, so I don't think we would need anything more. Um, is there?
Well, the conditions, I mean, I think we all wanna review the conditions.
Right, that we would, but I mean, in terms of what we would require is information. But I think what I'm envisioning, or what I see is a continuance with the expectation that we're coming back and we're voting on the CUP on the next one. Because we now have all the information, and this is sort of like last call to request it if you need more information. And then we're not coming back and asking for more information, and then we're all.
So, we're voting on this with the proposed phasing plan?
Well, I, we can talk about it in terms of is there, there a recommendation? But I think they have said, uh, you know, I, I think when we were voting, I think we can, you know, request different phasing at that point. I'm more, I want us to be able to make that decision and not to have a hang up that if we're pushing this, we're not requesting another meeting. And that's where I'm getting at more in terms of.
So, you're, um, you're, you're saying more information? I mean, I have no desire for more information. I have a desire for the applicant to come up with a better plan that assures commercial, but that's not information, that's.
Right, so we can, there's, there's a lot of conditions that we can talk. Condition, we'll use permit at the next one.
That's not what you're asking for.
No, I think what I'm asking is, I think if, if we plan on a continuance tonight, I wanna make sure that when we come back, that we are not, there is not another holdup where someone says, actually, I need this information to make up my mind. So, we can resolve any conditions and figure it out and take a vote. Does that largely make sense?
So, is that when we resolve the issue of whether the wetland mitigation is included in the?
Um, that's a fine one that I can take up now because that will actually impact the, the core part of the plan, but, um.
I ran the fiscal impact through my resident expert on this, and, and it, and it seems like it probably pans out. I think that was credible.
Um, to Greg, on your point, I think that's fine. We can take that up now before we, we move on.
Do you mind if we take a five-minute recess so we can kinda regroup as a team? Because we were pretty affirmative that we were seeking a vote here tonight, and it kinda sounds like it's going a different direction. Can we have five minutes where we can step outside?
Uh, yeah, that works. We're, because we're at nine sixteen, which is the other part of the concern, and I think there's gonna be some amount of sus making on the conditions to get us to a final vote here. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I don't so much have any more information as I feel like. We've got some legitimate concerns and we don't want the answers.
Logan, if the applicants are leaning, they shouldn't.
Oh, yes, sure, Paul.
Hell, I'm red socks. Blue jeans.
I mean, come on.
No, blue, blue is a flame, Johnny.
Is your intent to talk about the CIP afterwards? Or are you gonna?
I think generally the board is not like to go past nine. So, I think it's unlikely to do the CIP, so I think we're good on your end. Sorry to.
Can I, um, use this opportunity to put, um, two things on the new business for next or whenever? Um, is that, is that a?
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine, you can just flag it.
So, there's two, two things that, um, that have come up in, uh, in my discussions with, with some constituents. Now, the easy one first is there was a report about, uh, public officials entering non-disclosure agreements, NDAs, um, uh, and in, in some other state, um, when there was a, uh, artificial intelligence, you know, facility being opened and the, the planning board members entered NDAs. And I wanna know, and I don't expect anyone to answer this now, I wanna know whether that would be either banned by the right-to-know law or eclipsed by the right-to-know law. And if it is not, then I'd like the planning board to take some position that we should never enter an NDA. Um, and so that's, and, and I wanna talk about that at some later point.
Yeah, well, I'll give you my, my early thought is I'm, I'm almost certain we can't. And that when the state enters any settlement agreement, for example, people want confidentiality all the time, and we tell them, you can't.
Yeah.
Any agreement, whatever form, has to be public.
Yeah. The second, um, issue is a little bit more complicated. There are, um, a, a whole bunch of people in town who have, um, you know, an extra, um, building on their land that, you know, mother-in-law's been living in for the last thirty years, and no one has ever called it an ADU. Um, and, but it, i- in today's parlance, it would be called that. Um, and the question has come up whether someone in that situation can then now go build an ADU. Um, and, and so they would essentially have two of those. But the first one of them was long before there was any ADU statute or ordinance. And my personal opinion is that should be grandfathered, and they should be getting another one, but I know other people disagree with me. But there seems to me that there should be some policy position so that people in that situation know whether or not they can build what is essentially a, 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 a new ADU, but it, the first one isn't really an ADU. Um, and whether, and, and whatever our, whatever our position is on that, that would be a majority vote. Um, how, how that policy gets, uh, uh, enunciated and distributed, whether it's a planning board thing or a selectment thing, whether it goes in our regulations, whether it needs to be voted on by town meeting, but, um, or, or whether the, the ADU ordinance needs clarification, I don't know. But that issue is, is coming up with a number of people. So, those two things I'd like to put on this.
There's another part to that is a mother, when is a mother-in-law an ADU? Because it's legal to have roommates, it's legal to have your family live with you. My daughter can move in, uh, but when, what makes it an ADU?
And that's a great question for next time.
It is a great question. Can you just, while you're putting it in, just, um, have a note to flag that for Ken too so that they can participate, as that relates partially to building permits?
Okay.
Is that discussion about?
No. About adding a discussion of pre-existing ADUs.
A meeting, planning board meeting within a planning board.
Yes. We, we, we paused your hearing, but we didn't pause the meeting. So, we did, uh, new business. So, um, my next question just for you, and what do the next two meetings, both the first November and the second November, look like in terms of what we have previously told you and put on our schedule?
So, um, as far as I know, there are any applications or anything. It's, it's just, pretty much everything that's on the schedule is, is what we added to this agenda just in case there was time.
Okay.
Um, I think there's the actual hearing for the solace management chapter. Um, and if the LVR checklist needed a hearing. There's also HB six thirty-nine got added on recently, so these things could be added on. Um, but in November, you really need to get your warrant articles straightened out because we'll want the language by December so that we can give it to the lawyers, so that we can then do the hearings in January.
Okay. But no hearings currently for either of those two, so flexibility in, in that sense.
Do you run into veterans, uh, during the year?
See, that's actually on the agenda, and that's something.
Yeah.
Just gonna bring that up.
That's, that's where we're heading.
I can't be here that day.
All right, so the.
Yeah, and the, the reason I brought it up with Jan is because it's a holiday, so you have to pay me double time, which I don't really.
I got that email, and I didn't believe it was true. I was like, Tuesdays can't have holidays.
Yeah, there's like five or six federal holidays she gets double time.
You'd have to pay us double time.
Uh, it's a possible move to November four as another option. Makes me have all the warrant articles we have to get through.
That's election day somewhere.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be on call, but hopefully there's no disasters.
But not here, only a couple of cities.
Yeah, it's just, um, well, not all the cities, but, uh, some of the bigger ones. Just, at this point, we're just sort of figuring out availability. Do you have any conflicts with November four, if that was an option, Megan?
No.
Logan?
I can do the fourth.
I can do the fourth with that exception that if I get a call from a moderator who's freaking out post seven o'clock, I'd have to take my call.
Polls close at like eight.
Um, some are seven, some are eight, but if they are struggling with some issue, I'm the one on call.
I can, I'm good.
I can.
Okay.
But I would encourage to do it on a day when you were down to be here.
Um, I, I'm, I'm guaranteed that I'll be here. It's more that I may take a call, which would, usually that's when that happens, like, three minutes, because ultimately, they have to figure that out.
That's not entirely manageable.
Yeah, all right. So, the fourth is an option. Uh, before we, you know, take a motion and move there, you know, thoughts, comments? Disappointment?
In general, I, I know Greg has his comment about the use of the basin, et cetera. There's a few things that if we can hopefully put to bed tonight, I think that gets us to a spot where.
Yeah, that's on my list. I want that one to be gone because I don't want, it, it's harder if you had to reconfigure open space. We don't want you to have to do that. Are there any other smaller issues like that that would sort of completely derail a plan?
Again, reserving our rights to make comments to the next things the board say.
Certainly, okay. So, thank you. Um, on I, Greg, I, I'm inclined to agree with the Conservation Commission and their recommendation that it seems that excluding the parts where the humans are actually using it, like the road and the pump house, make a lot of sense, but leaving, um, stormwater retention, which is a lot of what the land does anyway, it makes sense to me that that's part of it. I'm also heartened by the fact that this is not a fifty percent on-the-dot open space. Any, but, you know, open to thoughts, comments for anyone, so.
I mean, this does rest a bit on whether it's open space or undisturbed space. And my understanding is that this is open space.
It says, shall remain undisturbed as designated open space. So, as I envision it, they have to, they have to deserve it somewhat to create those, but then they have to maintain them in a way that's ideally there. I mean, that's, it's gonna be, you know, standing water or grass or foliage, you know, it's, it's.
It's clearly already disturbed.
Right.
How much is the total space of all three of those?
All three of what?
The ponds.
Um, it is, it is, I do remember it being more than an acre because we are over an acre if we include those ponds area. So, um, if we had to remove the ponds from it, we would be below the fifty percent threshold, which then I'd have to adjust lots.
And point to the ponds?
Here, here, and here. The reason why this one's like situated there is because there's, there's a slope here and it's preserving the commercial area, so.
And I don't think we envisioned, uh, because we had that other discussion, like entirely undisturbed in the sense that there would be some activity to maintain it as a field. And similarly, the, you know, activity, I think we can talk next time, but I think a condition for the condo instruments is that they're following and maintaining the stormwater management systems in addition. And they've got the plan, I don't know if it needs to be that one, but.
My feeling about it is that we're getting no consideration for many of the things that we feel would be better for the town and better for the residents here. And that, uh, I'm reluctant to, uh, grant, uh, benefits when we're not getting any, getting, uh, reciprocal consideration.
Yeah, I, I, I don't say, I don't think that's unfair. I, I do think when I look at it, like, we are not granting bonus density. I think it's sort of the conclusion, we haven't expressly voted on that, but.
This is a similar, similar thing.
There are, there are parts of this plan that are built in that are consistent with, you know, if it was a different plan and we knew the commercial and everything fit together, that would warrant. So, there are parts of this plan that fit some of the goals of what our ordinance wants, which is why it encouraged in a different situation, bonus. Preserving a giant chunk of that open field, which will still be visible from the highway, I think is very important, you know, for the town and the image of people driving by the exit as they see it. And it will not be the same, right? Because there will be commercial lots, and we don't know what they'll look like. But slightly over, uh, fifty percent including those. And I think those, you know, the retention pond and the drainage are gonna be indistinguishable from the natural landscape once it's finished.
Do we need a motion for this, or are we offering a consensus comment?
I mean, we can, I think it's fair to consensus, but I think the expectation would be that we're not reversing that particular kind of vote because it would make it impossible to.
My question here is, at what point do we consider the, the discussion on this? My question here is, at what point do we consider the, the discussion on this topic to be closed?
Yeah, I think it's any point, yeah.
Because I think we have board consensus several meetings ago.
My, my feeling is that constituents would like to know who, what board members are voting for this and who are not.
Fair enough, so any further discussion before we just call a sort of roll call effectively on six point four I, the fifty percent?
Someone's gotta propose a motion, so we have, maybe you guys want to.
Well, I don't know that it needs to be a motion, it can just be, we're gonna take a roll call and we'll tell her what it is on, on six point four I that. Or maybe it should be a motion, that the planning board approves the.
Use of the.
Sorry, I'm getting, I'm getting late, because one's a stormwater retention pond, what are the other two?
They're both, they're all very infiltration basis, but you could call it a stormwater management basin.
Alright, the three?
Excuse me, I think it would be better to refer to it as the easement, the drainage easement area, because that's what is labeled on the plan, right?
Alright.
It's an easement, and it's a drainage easement.
So I'll, I'll read it off and we'll.
Yeah, correct.
Take it as a motion. I'd look for a motion for the planning board to approve after, because we've already consulted with the Conservation Commission, the three drainage easements or stormwater infiltration systems that are shown on the plan and located within the open space as being part of the fifty percent total land that is gonna remain undisturbed as designated open space. Is there a motion?
And a, a yay on that would.
That were proven, that would allow.
A lot of it is, a nay would, yes.
Nay is don't want to allow those three drainage. Is there a motion?
I'll move that.
It's not the best worded motion, but it's nine thirty, so, alright, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Alright. Any further discussion? I think we've had a lot.
Clarification, obviously, if their plan were to change again and alter the amount of open space, then this becomes moot, and we rediscuss.
Oh, right, this applies almost to the current plan.
Correct.
I think the expectation is that if we approve this, that the undisturbed open space is not changing on the plan that we're looking at next time. Alright. Prefer, prefer a roll call vote? Fine, either way, so, well, all I's, raise your hand, and we'll wait for Cal to take it. So all in favor, I. And all opposed?
Right. It was four to three in favor.
Okay. With that, I think, again, this was sort of my last call for other information or physical that would require a plan change that we'd want from the board. And then I'd take a motion continue to November fourth. If someone would be willing to make that motion.
Motion to continue to November four.
Second.
Sorry. Oh, I thought you said November second, I thought you were correcting me, I was like, wait, is it?
Alright, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, I. All opposed? Alright. Motion carries. Thank you all, it was a lot of time, I appreciate everyone hanging in there.
Please don't do this to us again.
Good news is, the list of information to bring is short, and so. Do we have? Yes, well, before we wrap up the actual meeting, we'll make it clear that there is no, no meeting on the eleventh, yes, meeting on the fourth.
Do we need a motion to move the meeting to fourth?
I think essentially we just, we just did it, so we've now got, you know, two weeks to make sure we get the notice out, which is enough.
That's somebody's question.
Get the notice up.
Immediately.
Tomorrow, is that, is that possible? Sorry, okay.
Perpetual motion to take Cal.
The solid waste one needs ten days, I think. The other ones, but I'm pretty sure the master plan piece, but I think we were just, we were just confirming the solid waste piece and then scheduling.
Right, but we haven't noticed it.
But I mean, we haven't, we haven't noticed the public hearing portion, but I don't think we were planning on doing the public hearing yet.
Don't forget. Just share with you that I did review the MAF, the solid waste revisions. And I sent to Cal a list of, and they're all minor little things. There was one thing that I had changed where the vote, the town had voted on and what we had said in the meeting. But what I did was I took the exact wording in the warrant article as to what the town voted for. And that's the only major revision I made through it, otherwise, it's, it's good.
Today, I also got a bunch of, I also got other edits from Beth Glower. And so I, earlier today, I put your comments and her comments together to renew draft that I was, earlier today, like an hour before the meeting. So I can actually send that out before the next meeting, so you guys will have a chance to get that.
Yeah, that is helpful. If, if, could you share what the revisions were?
I can highlight them, yeah, I can do like track changes.
Like, I know what mine were, but I'd be curious as to what it was that she proposed.
This is a good idea.
Absolutely.
So it just saves a lot of time.
I'm gonna like try to wrap up the next course question, but can everyone plan to take a look at, to the extent you have, at the capital improvement plan? The solid waste management chapter, that has a, basically, when we get to it next time, we're gonna review it and then schedule the public hearing on it. So the land use checklist, and then the twenty twenty-six warrant articles.
We, we haven't received that.
Where?
The only.
Your order?
You received.
Yeah, we have to write.
Write it right, okay.
Right, so just the ones that we've received, but just be prepared so that if we do end and hopefully have some time that we can knock out one of those.
But you said there were some, there were some emails perhaps.
But did you say?
Oh, one of those warrant article has been sent out.
So it's.
It's just the legislative changes and requirements.
Right, so it's one and a half pages, I think it was, it's.
There will be more?
There, there may be, but the one I'm talking about is, this one was already circulated, I just want us to be prepared then.
It would be helpful if all of the things that I need to review were in one email rather than me having to go find them all.
Um, I mean, I'll, I'll send out, and we'll send out a new email for what's gonna happen next week, and we can put all, yeah, we can.
Right, we can coordinate after, okay.
Also, does anybody want a paper copy of the capital improvement plan?
Yes.
I would love it.
No more, no, no more paper. I will take a digital copy of all of these delightful shiny documents.
That's in our email, that's, yeah. And I, I need a, like nine.
And. Sorry, I suppose, we'll, we'll wrap, because we can, we can talk, I think some of this is not like full board. Any other business for tonight, bearing in mind the town?
Washington do a drink.
Second.
Alright, all the seconds are in favor, so we're good. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr.